Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here with us tonight. We will now start our special presentations this evening. And tonight, first, we will be, we will honored to recognize November as National Aviation History Month. First established as National Aviation Day by President Franklin Delano Roosevelt in 1939, this observance has grown into a month-long celebration of our nation's achievements in aviation and aerospace. Aviation plays a meaningful role in Moreno Valley's history, thanks to our longstanding relationship with March Air Reserve Base. For more than a century, March has been a hub of aviation training, innovation, and national defense, leaving a lasting impact on both American aviation history and the development of our community here in Moreno Valley. To help us honor this legacy, we are pleased to welcome Mr. Moreno Valley, Jamil Dada, a distinguished community leader, civic leader for the Air Force Reserve Command, former honorary commander at March Air Reserve Base, and vice president of the March Airfield Museum Foundation. His commitment to the bear, to the bear, to the base and its history has earned him the nickname "Mr. March," along with Mr. Moreno Valley. Please join me and give him a warm round of applause. Jamil? Moreno Valley's proud aviation heritage began with the establishment of Arch Air Reserve Base, which played a defining role in shaping the community we know today. This legacy also includes the creation of the March Airfield Museum, a regional landmark that not only preserves our aviation history, but also hosts major community events from student-of-the-month recognitions for both Moreno Valley and Valverde Unified School Districts, to Chamber of Commerce gatherings, and many, many others. For more than a century, March has stood as a, at the center of aviation excellence, supporting training, advancement, and national defense, and continuing to influence our community's growth. At this time, I would like to read the proclamation for Aviation Month. Whereas, the month of November is recognized nationwide as National Aviation History Month, honoring the innovation, courage, and accomplishments that have advanced flight from its earliest beginnings to today's modern aerospace industry. And whereas, the city of Moreno Valley proudly neighbors March Air Reserve Base, one of the nation's oldest and most distinguished airfields, whose presence continues to exemplify excellence, service, and the enduring spirit of aviation. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Moreno Valley do hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as National Aviation History Month in the city of Moreno Valley, and encourage all residents to celebrate aviation's rich legacy and its continuing impact on our community and nation. Jamil, would you like to share a few remarks?
Well, I want to start by saying I'm glad I dressed up today, because when I look at how distinguished everybody is here, it's like I am glad that I wore something decent today.
Try to be like you, sir.
Thank you. So I have always, and I, some of you that have been around a long time, like old guys like me, know that I've been involved in the city for 40 years. And I have always called this city Aviation City because of March. Hundred and eight years old, out of the 72 Air Force bases in our great nation, March is the third oldest. So, and it's right in our backyard, and it's continuing to grow. New airplanes are coming, we're getting KC-46 tankers, we're working on getting F-15 EXs to replace our old F-16s. There's a possibility of getting a new unit, Space Force unit, at March as well. So what a lot of people don't know, that these airplanes, aviation, is so extraordinary that not only, some people always argue with me and say, "Oh, why are you so much into these aviation stuff?" You know, they, they kill people, they fight. They don't, they prevent war. But the other thing is that March, March's global reach is, has a lot to do with disaster preparedness. No matter if there is an earthquake, or a volcano, or a typhoon, or a fire, any kind of flood, our airplanes are typically the first to respond anywhere in the, in the world, because we have so many bases. In fact, and for a lot of the Third World countries, we respond even before their own people respond. So that's what aviation can do, it can get our people all over the world to help. And I am proud to be a part of it. I get, I'm privileged that I get to fly with the Air Force and, and visit, I've visited 35 of the 72 bases, but also the March Field Air Museum. We continue to tell, maintain a future for the past. So we celebrate our veterans, and we celebrate our military, and we will continue to do that with the 100,000 attendance we have at the museum. And again, the museum is in our backyard, so we're proud of all that. But I want to thank you for have, allowing me to accept this proclamation on behalf of Aviation Day, and for all of our veterans and all of our Air Force. Thank you.
Airshow?
Yes, oh, so I was in an airshow meeting this week, and with the Thunderbird representative. And so they have given us the 2027 airshow dates, Sean. It's, so the last three airshows have been in April, this one's going to be in March. So it's March 27th and 28th of 2027. And it'll be here before we know it, right? Next month, it's, in a month, it'll be like 2026. So we're gonna start having our airshow planning meetings in February, and we're gonna roll again. So the Thunderbirds will be here. And remember, 400,000 people, it was the largest airshow in the nation when it comes to being on a military base, largest in the nation. So amazing, so thank you again, very much.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamil Dada, for accepting this proclamation from the city of Moreno Valley for Aviation History Month.
My pleasure, it's an honor. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, God bless.
Thank you. For our second special presentation tonight, the city of Moreno Valley is proud to recognize November as Native American Heritage Month. This is the third year our city has formally honored this important observance. The history of the United States extends far beyond European colonization and westward expansion. Native Americans have lived on this land for more than 10,000 years across every region of the country, shaping such rich cultures, languages, traditions, and ways of life. Their deep relationship with the land, enduring resilience, and profound contributions continue to guide and inspire us today. At this time, it is my pleasure to invite our honored guests to the stage. District Director Vanessa Briarty, who works with and serves under Assemblyman James C. Ramos of District 40, and Sula Arvizo, a tribal representative and daughter of the Saboba Band of Luiseño Indians. Let's give them a warm round of applause. Assemblymember James C. Ramos is a lifelong advocate for Native American communities, a member of the Yamava, of the Samoan Nation. He grew up in the Samoan Reservation and previously served on the tribe's governing council. He made history as the first Native American elected to the California State Assembly, and the first Native Californian to serve in the entire state legislature. Assemblymember Ramos has championed tribal sovereignty, cultural preservation, educational equity, and the advancement of Native voices throughout California. Sula Arvizo is a proud member and daughter of the Saboba Band of Luiseño Indians, a federally recognized tribe based in Riverside County. The Saboba Band's reservation, originally established by executive order in 1883, lies in the foothills of the San Jacinto Mountains along San Jacinto River. Sula's leadership and community involvement reflect her dedication to sharing and strengthening Native American culture throughout the Inland Empire and beyond. It is an honor to preserve this proclamation, recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month. At this time, I will read the proclamation. Whereas, the month of November is recognized throughout the United States as Native American Heritage Month, a time to honor and celebrate the rich histories, diverse cultures, and enduring traditions of Native American, Alaska Native, and indigenous peoples. Whereas, Native Americans have made significant contributions to the arts, sciences, government, agriculture, education, and defense of our nation, and their resilience continues to inspire all Americans. Whereas, the city of Moreno Valley acknowledges that Native Peoples were the first inhabitants to this, of this land, whose deep connection to the environment and commitment to community stewardship continue to serve as a guiding example. Whereas, Inland Empire region is home to several tribal nations whose cultural heritage, leadership, and collaboration have greatly enriched the history and progress of our region. Whereas, Native American Heritage Month provides an opportunity for all residents to learn from the strength, wisdom, and cultural contributions of Native communities, and to celebrate their lasting influence on the social, cultural, and economic fabric of our nation. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Moreno Valley hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Moreno Valley, and encourage all residents to honor, celebrate, and learn from the heritage and contributions of Native American Peoples. Would you like to share a few remarks?
[speaking Spanish] As was shared, my name's Vanessa Briarty. I'm from the Pueblo of Laguna, and I serve as the district director for the first and only California Native American elected to our state's legislature. And so, on behalf of Assemblymember Ramos, thank you to the mayor, to the council members for this recognition. California is home to the largest population of tribes, and largest population of tribal individuals. So since time immemorial, our communities have been stewarding this land, making economic development, creating really great impacts for all of those around us. And it's really important to make sure that that representation is there, because representation for us, it truly does matter. When we look at Assemblymember Ramos and the things that he's done and accomplished within the short time that he's been in the legislature, it allows us as the opportunity, as those up-and-coming individuals, the youth, to see that and to also engage in those opportunities. So we are very, very lucky tonight to have with us the 2025 daughter of Saboba, Ms. Sula Arvizo. She is the up-and-coming next leader for her community. She's local to this ancestral area, so I would love to invite her to say a couple words.
So hello, everybody, I hope you're all doing well. My name is Sula Arvizo, I come from the Saboba Band of Luiseño Indians, I'm Payong Koichuam. My father is Nate Arvizo, my mother is Melissa Arvizo. My paternal grandparents are Frenchy Bascas from the Saboba Band, and Charlie Arvizo from the Rincon Band. My paternal great-grandparents relate Tony Bascas from the Pachanga Band, and Mary Mahado Bascas from the Saboba Band, while also the late Chief Arvizo from the Rincon Band, and Luann Mahado from the Paula Band. And I'm the 2020, 2025, 2026 Shabob Pashwamai, or better known as Daughter of Saboba. It is an honor to be before you all today. It's a great thing what you guys are doing, you know, all this representation, it, it matters, you know. Growing up, we didn't have a lot, but seeing that everybody is making, you know, these new ways, and seeing us as Native people, we, we haven't gone anywhere. And so just seeing that you guys are acknowledging us, and acknowledging our resistance, and our presence here today, it means so much to us. I have a few words on my phone. So this month, not just this month, but every day, it's a time to reflect and honor the profound history, culture, and contributions of our people, our First Nations people. It's a reminder that the story of this land is incomplete without recognizing the original inhabitants and enduring our legacy. From the first people to the leaders and visionaries who have shaped communities, us natives or First Nation people have been integral to the fabric of this nation. Moreno Valley's proclamation is a crucial step. It signifies a commitment to acknowledging the past, understanding the present, and building a future that respects and includes Native American voices. It is an opportunity to educate ourselves, to listen and support initiatives that promote Native American heritage and rights. And, you know, let's use this month and every day, and this proclamation as a foundation for ongoing dialogue, partnership, and recolonization. Thank you.
Let's give him another warm round of applause for all the contributions Native Peoples have done to our great country. Thank you.
What an honor, and a special moment to, you know, recognize the original inhabitants of this land, thank you. And please send our gratitude to Assemblymember James Ramos for all the work that he does, and please know that you have a family here at Moreno Valley City Hall. Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for the first and second presentation of this evening. We will now go ahead and move into the third and final presentation for today. The city of Moreno Valley is proud to recognize November as Movember. And if you look at some of the camera angles throughout the meeting, you'll see some of our folks here at the city. I, I apologize, I, I missed the cut, and then it was too late to go back, but I, I get to, you know, see, see you all standing up and shining a spotlight on Movember, that stands for Men's Health Awareness Month, which is an international movement dedicated to raising awareness about men's physical and arguably more important, mental health. What began in 2003 with a small group of friends has grown into a global effort that brings attention to critical health issues such as prostate cancer, testicular cancer, mental health challenges, and suicide prevention. Movember is about far more than growing mustaches. It's about encouraging early detection, fostering open conversations, and strengthening community support to improve men's health outcomes. Men's health is not only a global issue, it's also a local one that impacts families and communities right here in Moreno Valley. Far too often, health conditions go unnoticed because men delay seeking care or feel hesitant to speak openly about their struggles. By recognizing Movember, we reaffirm our commitment to education, prevention, and wellness for the men and boys in our city, and we honor the families who stand beside them. Representing this important cause tonight, we are pleased to welcome Rebecca Dabs, the Prostate Cancer Implementation Director for Movember USA. If we could please give her a big, warm round of applause as she joins us at the mic. Thank you so much for joining us. Welcome, welcome. And please join me on this side if you'd like. I'm gonna read a little bit from the proclamation, and then I will hand the floor over to you. So Rebecca has been instrumental in advancing men's health initiatives across the nation, raising awareness, increasing access to screenings, and supporting programs that strengthen mental well-being. Her leadership helps empower men to prioritize their health and encourages families in communities like ours to support them. Movember USA is a nonprofit organization dedicated to funding lifesaving research, promoting mental health awareness, and expanding access to screenings and support programs nationwide. Their mission helps reduce stigma, encourage early action, and engage communities in meaningful ways. Rebecca has played a vital role in bringing these resources to local communities across our country, including here in Moreno Valley. And at this time, to read a little bit from the proclamation, it reads, "Whereas, the month of November known globally as Movember is dedicated to raising awareness of men's health issues, including prostate cancer and mental health challenges. And whereas, men face unique health challenges, and awareness, education, and early detection can significantly reduce preventable deaths and improve overall well-being. And whereas, the Movember Foundation and other organizations have raised millions of dollars globally for programs focused on research, education, and community-based support for men's physical and mental health." Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Moreno Valley do hereby proclaim that the month of November 2025 is Movember, Men's Health Awareness Month in the city of Moreno Valley, and we encourage all residents to participate in Movember activities, raise awareness, and support men's health initiatives within our own community. And now, at this time, Rebecca, I'd like to pass the floor over to you to share a few words.
Thank you so much, wow, what can I say that hasn't already been said? Except, thank you so much, Mayor, council members, and the entire city of Moreno Valley for this amazing recognition and your commitment to men's health. As you said, Movember is the leading men's health organization globally, and we work year-round to improve men's health. We know in the US and here in the Inland Empire that men continue to face preventable mental and physical health issues. We also know that there is a ripple effect when men are not healthy. It affects their families, it affects their friendships, their workplace, and entire communities. And Awareness Month like this, it's more than just symbolic, it creates momentum. It opens doors and starts conversations so young men, young boys and men can start talking about their health and their health needs. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for your partnership on this important work, and for your commitment to elevating men's health here in the city of Moreno Valley. Thank you.
And on behalf of the city and my colleagues on the council, as they come up to join us for a group photo, we will present this proclamation officially as a small token of appreciation and recognition of Movember here in the city of Moreno Valley. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you once again, Rebecca, for the work that you are doing, and certainly will continue to, to recognize Movember here in Moreno Valley. And with that, we are officially concluding our special presentations for this afternoon. We will be back in about five minutes to begin our regular council meeting. Thank you. To the regular city council meeting of the city of Moreno Valley. The city council receives a separate stipend from the Community Service District if any CSD business is conducted at this meeting. I now call this meeting to order on November 18th, 2025 at 6:02 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Delgado, and please remain standing for the invocation given by Pastor Edward Ogwo from Heartbeat of God International Ministries.
Please stand if you are able, place your right hand over your heart, pledge allegiance to our flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Good evening Pastor, welcome.
Let us pray. In God we trust. Holy God of all creation, you are welcomed in this place as the council of Moreno Valley assembles to deliberate on the matters affecting the city of Moreno Valley. Father as your servant, I call to ask you to give each and every one of them the spirit of wisdom, spirit of understanding, spirit of unity, and love among one another. That all they're going to deliberate today will be done decently and in order. And at the end, progress will be achieved. And Moreno Valley will grow to an utmost level that every citizen of this city will embrace the work of these chosen men in Jesus' name I have prayed. Anyone who agree with me says amen.
Thank you very much. Once again Pastor Edward Ogwo from Heartbeat of God International Ministries. Appreciate you joining us for the invocation this evening. And at this time, I will hand it over to our city clerk for a roll call, please.
Thank you Mayor. Councilmember Bernard?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Delgado?
Here ma'am.
Mayor Protempa Casana Cruz?
Here.
And Mayor Cabrera?
Present. Thank you Madam Clerk. Item E, motions to excuse, we are all here, so we'll go ahead and move to item F, staff introductions, please.
Patty Rodriguez, City Clerk.
Paul Radvica, Deputy City Clerk.
Stephen Coutenias, City Attorney.
Brian Mohan, City Manager.
Lana Jimenez, Assistant City Manager of Administration.
Sean Kelleher, Assistant City Manager Development.
Robert Alvarez, Manager of Community Enhancement and Neighborhood Services.
Kyle Worsensky, Economic Development Director.
Melissa Walker, Director of Public Works.
Jeremy Babic, Director of Parks and Community Services.
Natalie Potter, Human Resources Division Manager.
Diana Rocket Sykes, Division Manager, Emergency Management.
Sarah Mack, Chief of Police.
Thank you team. As always, an honor to be in the chamber to conduct the people's business. We'll go ahead and move to item G, approval of order of the agenda, and I will look to my colleagues to see if there are any requests. If not, we can go ahead and entertain a motion and a second to approve the order of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve the order of the agenda. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Thank you Mayor. Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Mayor Protempa Casana Cruz?
Yes.
And Mayor Cabrera?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes with five yeses, and next is item H, which is public comments on matters that are not on the agenda. The city now offers language translation services through a free app called Wordly. The app automatically translates a variety of languages into English and vice versa. Your earphones or earbuds, please use your earphones or earbuds to listen to the verbal translation. If you do not have any such listening devices, please let the city clerk staff know and we will gladly let you borrow some for this meeting. Before we move on to public comments, I want to remind everyone to direct their comments to the city council. For comments on items on tonight's agenda, each speaker will have a total of three minutes to comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to comment on any items not on the agenda?
We do Mayor. The first three speakers are George Hague, followed by Christopher Baca, followed by Jacqueline Cooper.
Good evening.
Evening. Name is George Hague. Last year, the state attorney general won a lost case against the city on our general plan and our climate action plan, which you will soon be voting on to correct the deficiencies pointed out by the courts. Staff will probably tell you that the city won on land use and zoning and will infer that our zoning was not set aside. But last night I sent you a two-page writ that showed that the zoning was set aside. In the northeast, we currently have no sewers, no sidewalks, no public transit, no decent bike lanes, no easy place to walk to as far as commercial. The city can also, with your help, request to downzone northeast R210 lands to R2 lands surrounding the area right now. Because of the 18,000 units you have approved in the last couple of years, city housing element can be changed to accommodate the R2 zoning many residents have requested for years. Even when the area's council member died and they had no representation when the 2021 zoning was approved. In the last 24 hours, you received another letter from the attorney general pointing out what a poor job the city and its consultants have done in responding to previous letters written to protect the residents of Moreno Valley. They were surprised that the planning commission did not wait for the letter you just received prior to voting. One commissioner however did vote in that manner. It is expected that the city will again produce a very poor response and recommend you vote without waiting for the AG to respond. If that is done, I'm afraid you're setting us up for another lawsuit by the attorney general. Assembly Bill 98 requires that the city to have designated truck routes that do not come close to and impact sensitive receptors like schools and parks. Again, the attorney general pointed out in their letter, truck routes planned before you pass many schools on Heacock and Frederick Street. The attorney general also pointed out that the city has not had the type of meeting required by AB 98. Prior to designating these truck routes, you will vote on at your next meeting. The 40 million square foot World Logistics Center will soon begin building as many as 40 individual 1 million square foot warehouses, which will add at least 12,000 daily diesel truck trips to State Route 60. I can't wait for that. And our local routes, and you have approved five other warehouses.
Thank you sir. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Christopher Baca, followed by Jacqueline Cooper, followed by Angel Oriana.
Good evening. Again, my comments are my own and not influenced or reflect anybody else's views but myself. Okay, so I wrote this out and bear with me, it's going to go quickly because I can't read the whole thing in three minutes regardless. California Law Brown Act, city councils, is it legal to approve a MOU for developer in closed session? No, a city cannot approve a MOU for a developer in closed session under Brown Act. Brown Act generally requires all meetings to be open to the public with limited exceptions. MOU scope, okay, so what to do instead? Recent memorandum of understanding concern addressing governance, ethics, and community impacts. Recent actions by the city council have raised significant concerns regarding the balance of power and ethical governance within our city. By the way, this is regarding the Gilman Springs Highland Fairview Development MOU. That's on, apparently they put it online. So anyhow, concerning regarding authority and oversight, the fundamental principle of municipal government is that no single official or department should wield unchecked power. Ethical, legal implications of the recent MOU. The MOU recently developed by the city manager and city attorney has sparked widespread concern, potential litigation, and reputational risk. If these concerns are substantial in court, the city risks being publicly labeled as corrupt, beholden to greedy developers, special interests, and the influence of dark money. Such a reputation would not only bring shame to your community, but also to those seeking reelections such as Shalinda Bernard and our mayor. Safeguarding our community, okay. Arguments for revocation of the MOU by the city council memorandum of understanding are formal agreements that articulate tensions between parties, especially in public administration. When such agreements are formulated by city managers, I'm out of breath. Okay. Planning officials, they must adhere to both ethical guidelines and legal frameworks to uphold public trust and the rule of law. Ethical concerns lack of transparency, accountability, issues, public interest, legal concerns, exceeding authority, procedural violations, potential conflict of interests. Recommendations, immediate revocation, conduct an independent review, implement safeguards, transparent communication. Conclusion, given the serious ethical and likely legal concerns, the city council has not only the authority, but the obligation to revoke or undo the MOU created by the city manager and planning officials. This action will reaffirm the council's commitment to transparency, lawful, and accountable governance and serve.
The next three speakers are Jacqueline Cooper, followed by Angel Oriana, followed by Seth Cox.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Cooper. This is actually my first time here at one of the meetings and I've been a resident of Moreno Valley for over 40 years. And my concern today is basically regarding the safety, safety of just all the people here in Moreno Valley. Our police force, we don't have enough officers to actually patrol in the area. And it's, I dealt with the domestic violence situation recently. And I'm here on that behalf, but also on because I realize it's such an issue with our officers, not having enough officers to patrol, not having enough officers to respond to the certain areas. We're dealing with a lot of speeding in the area with the in the Moreno Beach area, Moreno Beach Drive, JFK Championship in that area with the excess of the apartments that are now going up and the golf course. And also we have two schools and a few parks in that area and there is a lot of speeding. I did speak with, I believe Barbara Hamilton and also Edward regarding putting some speed bumps on our street because it's a special area where the, there's an incline and we get a lot of traffic coming through. And not, they did the assessment at one point, but there wasn't enough traffic to actually put the speed bumps in. But I'd like them to look at some other areas, the way, the other avenues as far as how our street is made where it's on an incline. And a lot of people like to just kind of go through there on their motorbikes and so forth. So you know, it's a safety when you contact the police department. Oftentimes, there's no one in the area, there's no one to assess, to evaluate. I don't see any DUI checkpoints. I don't see any radar checks being done on Moreno Beach. Now that it's a two-lane, excuse me, a one lane, it was changed to a one lane. And now people are just speeding around and using the bike lane. And they're also using the turn lane to actually speed around the cars that are just driving through. So officer safety, more officers to help with some of the issues that we're having in the city. We're close to the hospitals, two hospitals, Kaiser, it's up and coming, RUHS, they're building over there. We just need more safety, more officer safety, more patrolling, and I'm here today to hopefully advocate for that. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Angel Oriana, followed by Seth Cox, followed by James Armore.
Hello, Mayor, Council, City Staff. I'm just here pretty much just to show my appreciation for the city on doing moving forward and helping us out right with the men's mental health. So I represent the association or the union here right with IBW Local 47. I've been actually privileged to attend a lot of crisis trainings, right, and mental health trainings through the local. And it's actually scary to see and like actually see the actual statistics, right, of like the blue collar worker that suffer from like mental health. It's not really talked about, really, right, as men, we don't really talk about our feelings, right? We bury it and then we just do some push-ups and just move on with our day. But when I actually like come down to it and we actually like see how many people actually suffer, right, from mental health, it's actually really scary. And there's a, there's a few speakers that we encountered down at some of these trainings that I really want the city to bring in. I have worked with the HR department here, which has been like really great and very supportive. I know Brian and, and the rest of the city staff has also been very supportive of, you know, bringing some resources to mental health, right? So I just want to show my appreciation to pretty much everyone here and let you guys all know that it's very important to us, city staff, and everybody else, especially the blue collar worker, right? And if we can just continue to work together and, you know, bring some more awareness, I appreciate it. But other than that, appreciate everybody, appreciate all you guys up there and then city staff, guys are good, thank you.
The next three speakers are Seth Cox, followed by James Armour, followed by Pat Busby.
Evening, council, staff, audience. Seth Cox, long-term resident of Moreno Valley. I'm up here as a resident of Moreno Valley, not a representative of any organization or council I may sit on, or commission I may sit on. My first subject is on the personal side. I think I came up here several months ago and mentioned about the construction at the intersection of Oliver and Alessandra. At that point, I complained that you tore up my culvert that protected my driveway, or mine and the two other families that live on Oliver. They tore up the cupboard and I was, I was told it would be put back. It was not, okay? So with this rain, the water pooled up in my dirt road and about 40 feet out into Alessandro and made a mud mess. When I drove out of it Sunday morning to go somewhere, I put on brakes and I just slid right out into Alessandro before I could get stopped. And then I could hardly get enough traction to get going again, to get out of the way of everybody else. So my driveway is a mess. I turned in pictures and all today and, which I suppose I could, there wasn't a category to turn it in, but I did. So, and then it said it'd be addressed within 10 working days. I hope it doesn't take that long. Okay, enough on that. The second one, I wasn't going to say a word about this and just let it go through, but I couldn't control myself. Happens to do with a flag that someone had a decision to replace it, okay? I don't believe that is a good idea. My opinion of a flag, it's a representation of a past, the present, and the future. If you, and that emblem right up there was the beginning of Moreno Valley. It's on the flag, if anybody knows what the flag looks like, but the flag has a motto on it. I don't see anything wrong with it. To me, it's disrespectful for the history of Moreno Valley and the people who have built it where it is today, okay? If you want to change the motto, that's fine. Change the motto. Have more specialty flags that you will use in events. But the city flag should be historical in nature and follow it from the time it inception to the city goes away. It's, to me, it's equivalent to somebody wanting to change the American flag and change all the white to yellow. That would be disrespectful. It would not recognize the history of the United States. Thank you.
The next three speakers are James Armour, followed by Pat Busby, followed by Julie Pedrosa.
Hello, mayor, city council. It's a blessing to be here today. Before I get started, I just want to share that I'm super grateful, or nonprofit super grateful for renewing the contract for another two years. It's been a huge, crazy journey, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, and just super grateful to get to continue the journey. And I'm hoping that I can eventually create a PDF and show you guys how the last two years went. I have a lot of footage and data to share. And I also have data to share for this, our most recent data. Not including this month, so far, we have served a total of 1,771 individuals. With our street outreach, we have served 302 individuals. Number of unhoused individuals served is 904. Families served, not including this month, is 149. And with our events so far this year, we have served 654 from the events. And then up to date, we have housed 78 individuals. So I'm really proud of that data. We're doing really good. And then I also want to share about the food bank we did on Sunday. So on Tuesday, I got a call asking if we'd be interested in helping with that, and I said, of course. And so originally, we're gonna do it at the Sunny Meat Park. But I reached out to Juliana Building Up Lives Foundation so we can team up. And she was, she welcomed us with open arms. So what we did is with the $5,000, we also got a $500 donation from an individual. So we bought 53 Food For Less gift cards for $100 each. We created an affidavit stating that they would spend the money only on food at Food For Less. We had an evaluation survey where they would tell us how they, how it went. It's in to upload the receipt, which individuals have so far, and I brought the data today. And altogether, including the households, we served 285, oh no, 225 individuals. From Tuesday up until Sunday, we had 285 individuals reached out to us. So I only confirmed 120. And Juliana looked out for the rest. So we also bought 11 turkeys and one ham with the, with the funds too. And then altogether at the event that we had, it was 520 individuals in total. That's including the households. And it was amazing. I have asked questions such as, would you have referred, preferred to receive a box of food instead of groceries? Majority said yes. Did you feel that receiving a grocery gift card was helpful for you and your family? 100% said yes, and so forth. I even asked the city council question.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Pat Busby, followed by Julie Pedrosa, followed by Luis Palomares.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pat Busby and I am a representative of Building Up Lives Foundation. And I just wanted to come and kind of confirm the information that was given regarding the food bank that took place on the 16th Sunday. I do all of the data for the clients who come and visit our food bank on a weekly basis. So I have ongoing numbers as they pertain to Building Up Lives Foundation. Partnering up with Inland Compassion was wonderful because we had an opportunity to, to see what he does. He saw what we do. And I helped calculate all the analytical data, pre-register the clients because we, as far as Building Up Lives is concerned, is we pre-register everyone who comes through our line to ensure that number one, they're in need. Number two, that they're only sending one person per household in order for us to be able to reach more people. So basically, the numbers that James gave was correct. They gave out, they reached 225 people. The organizations combined was 520 people, people, 520 people that we served. That included about 155 individuals or households. And that's basically what I wanted to, to come up and say and just, and, and give you an idea of what we do as an individual nonprofit. For the week prior, Building Up Lives served 291 people with our 22 volunteers. So we have a good reach around the community. I think that's it. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Julie Pedrosa, followed by Luis Palomares, followed by Debra Johnson.
I don't think I've ever seen her nervous. That was a first, her first time here to you guys, really digging in. She's been volunteering and training for a year and a half to collect the information that's needed. And what she's going to be doing is a countywide ID for those that are in need. So this is a printed ID that we'll be putting out and it goes to those. We have Ralph, Ralph is 78 years old. He's, he's on disability. Nothing's gonna change in Ralph's life. He's not gonna go get another job, those kind of things. He is someone in need and he'll be number 22 forever. And he keeps that card and he can go to all the other nonprofits and they know he's vetted, that he's already someone that definitely needs. That's one thing that Pat's gonna be doing. Hopefully, she'll be doing the impact results on a, on a monthly basis here. We do a lot of things. I do have flyers out here, some for council. We have four different locations. I'm pretty excited. Tomorrow, we are redoing Hemlock location. Hemlock is gonna be a clothing only. All our donations that come in, that's clothing will be in bins. Those that are law enforcement, social workers, teachers can come in Monday through Friday for free and pick the clothing for their clients. I'm hoping this will free up the time. I can't tell you how many times social workers call me and they're on the phone four or five hours trying to locate their clients a pair of clothes. Like 3X, 4X, there's clients that are 3X, 4X. Those are really hard to find, so they're on the phone five, six hours. I'm sorry, social workers have more to do than chase clothing. So hopefully, this will be a drop-in center that they can come in and they can pick the clothing they need for their client. On Saturdays and Sundays, we'll open it up for the public. The items would be a dollar, $2. And hopefully, that helps, our teenagers love doing this thrift store thing, you guys. And I think it'll, it'll help them, you know how that goes. They're gonna donate their stuff and pick 10 more. So it'll be a forever thing. But I'm hoping that it's a highlight for the county, that social workers, teachers as well, if they have a little Johnny, Johnny needs clothing, they can get a voucher and say, Johnny, you won this. You and your family go over there and get free clothing. So those kind of things to start meeting the needs of those that need. And then I just sent the letter of intent for the shower shuttle, waiting for that approval. And I'm really hoping to do a huge difference. We work, we work with probation. And so safety is one thing that the shower shuttle will bring, and I really want to show that data in a year's time. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Luis Palomares, followed by Debra Johnson, followed by Bee Hunter.
Luis Palomares, community activist. Well, we gotta, our hats off to these nonprofits. They really do a lot for the people in the community that have those needs. Thank you so much. I applaud you for that. Also, you know, I looked at the last council meeting, I wasn't here, but they were talking about $335,000 for an outfit to come in and talk about the, the staff and, and our workers here at the city as far as their, their pay and their titles and how they could redo it and make it better. And hey, $335,000, I could be wrong, maybe I'm off a few thousand, but that's a lot of money. I know there was three, two other people that put in for that bid and you, you went with the highest bidder. I don't understand, how are you spending our money? Council, you voted on this, the staff brought it up and recommended it. That's, that's not being safe with our money. We raised a penny tax, a penny tax. It's gonna bring us how much, 30 million a year? Wow, that's great for police and fire. I'm all for it, let's keep it going for all these nonprofits that need our help with the homeless and people in need. I'm all for that. But when we're spending $335,000 on an outfit to come and tell the staff, look at all these suits here. I'm sure they're educated, I'm sure, they, they turn around so much. I don't, I don't recognize some of them anymore. But couldn't they pull it together and make it happen between them all and figure it out with some help of an agency to come in? But $335,000, cut the check yourselves, cut the check yourself, out of your money. That's our taxpayer money. That's our dollars. But I'm more disappointed in the council that, you know, approved it. I think a council member, Elena Santa Cruz here, was saying, wait, stop, no, yet, you know? They did a, something with the, the, the college over there. The same outfit didn't do a good job. All the red flags were going up, but did you read, did you look? What we're giving away here, what we're doing with our money here? Then another thing that was going on a while back, you know, the church here asked for $15,000 to have an event over there. I'm all for that, that's great. $15,000 to close this church and do that because we got our mayor here, that's all in cahoots with the people over there and Gonzalez here. You know, let's open it up for every church then. I'm gonna put flyers at all the churches, let's do this. You need money, you wanna have a festival? We're, hey, we're all about it. You need $5,000? We're all about, that's favoritism, that's nepotism. Sister City, oh wow, how long has it been? They haven't even talked about it, 15 years later? And Gonzalez, Sister City, everybody wants a free vacation on the taxpayer of Moreno Valley. Use your money, Gonzalez, use your money. And it, it seems like a conflict of interest because you're.
Thank you.
The next two speakers are Debra Johnson, followed by Bee Hunter.
Good evening, I'm Debra Johnson. I'm here to speak on the 111 acre that is off of Ironwood between Nathan and Moreno Beach. What I'm asking of you is to have some hindsight in what Moreno Valley used to be, which 150 years ago was Shoshone Indians. And then after that, we were agricultural and farmers. And I would love to have some citrus brought back. That would be awesome because Redlands and Riverside both cherish that heritage. So if we could bring it back here, that'd be awesome. But another thing that I would like to have our council have behind, be, besides hindsight, is some foresight. What do you want Moreno Valley to be known for? As a council, as a body of people in the future? What are we gonna be known for besides traffic congestion, a jungle, concrete jungle, and 1,000 warehouses? What do you, where is our trajectory? What, who are we going to be? For example, Temecula, we all know that's traffic and congestion, but what are they known for? A lot of people go there for wineries, that's what they're known for. What are we known for? That's what I want you to think about. So when you have a lot of people sitting on top of a lot of people, when they live on top of each other, it brings crime, just as Ms. Cooper stated. And that's why she's advocating for more police officers, which I also advocate for as well. Please do not turn R2 zoning into R10. Do not take away Moreno Valley's legacy. That's who we are. What beauty does Moreno Valley have? Besides Lake Paris, which was brought in 1973, right? And the M, which was, started to be built in 1955, but finally was lit up in 1984 when we became a city? Who are we and where are we going? I'm extremely concerned because I also have read all the letters that Jortag has. And I am mortified, to say the least, that there, there's been such irresponsibility. Huge irresponsibility. And you're entrusted with our legacy and our integrity, not only to the city and to the people. So I'm asking you to please represent us well and make sound decisions. Please do not turn R2 into R10. That's a travesty. Huge travesty. Please think, where are we going? What are we gonna be known for?
That's part of us.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bee Hunter.
Good evening, everyone, city council. I see some eyes, hey, family. Just here to just thank all of you, mayor, councilwoman Bernard, and the whole city council. I just want to share some updates with our impact recently from the Project Pantry program. We were able to serve 160 families more than our usual. So we also impacted 311 families as a whole, 1,173 individuals. And also, all the households ranged between three to 10 individuals per household. And we had 98 families that actually came for the first time. So that was huge. We did anticipate having 100 more families than usual. So with the support of the Project Pantry, like we were able to fill all those gaps. Also have some analytics to share for major. Also have some analytics to share for major cities that were impacted by percentage. For the city of Moreno Valley, 67.6 residents were at our drive-through. From Riverside, it was 10.8%. We had people come all the way from Hemet at 5.4%. Paris, we had 6.8% residents come, which is like all the IE. But surprisingly, we even had all at 1.4% each. San Jacinto, Rialto, Victorville, Maraloma, and Long Beach. So all these people, whether it was one, two, or three, came from a long distance by the marketing that we shared and also our ongoing outreach. We service low-income families and unhoused community every second and fourth Thursday and Friday, or in Saturday as well. So with this particular outreach, we were able to allocate those funds to. Half of the Project Pantry budget we used for pretty much like 2,400 food items, which is very great. So that, again, filled that 100 resident gap, or 100 recipients. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Bernard. We also were able to purchase 35 turkeys for our earlycomers. And I'll tell you this, people as early as 4 o'clock in the morning wait outside at our drive-through. And that's pretty impressive. Our team isn't even there till 6:30 in the morning, right? So people are camping out, they're finding the coordinates between the tree and the ground to know exactly where to park by our ninth, by our ninth easy-up. So they know who are gonna be there. And all those people that came early, we were able to distribute them the turkeys. So thank you so much for that. And just a reminder for anyone who is not aware of our organization, Power Speaks Louder, our next drive-through would be on Thanksgiving Day at 10:30 a.m. at the Moreno Valley Mall parking lot. So there we will also anticipate more families coming out because we all know what's going on with the, the previous government shutdown and everything. So again, that support really helped us out. And just continue to keep doing it if you have the opportunity, council, to continue to give us those funds. And also, last seven seconds I have, thank you again for the approval of the pilot program for Power Speaks Louder. Thank you so much.
The final speaker is Roy Blacker.
Hi, too. I'm even more extremely nervous than the other speaker that was mentioned because this is also my first time speaking here. And I say that just to emphasize or illustrate the extreme gaslighting that goes on from Moreno Valley to the District of Criminals and all points in between. To answer Hurricane Luisa's question, well, where did the, where does the, where did they spend the money? Well, it appears we're gonna spend $2 million from our mayor, Baby Jesus, who I believe 1,111% was using all the tools in his toolbox to violate people's First Amendment rights because he didn't like what he was, what was said about him and his colleague. Prove me wrong. Have enough guts to make, to hold your promise like you did eight years ago and ever since. Come sit beside me and we'll broadcast it live and in living color for the whole world to see, and you can make your case. Don't hide behind lawyers. Lawyers, courts cannot stop you from speaking. Just like closed sessions or anything else, ask Mr. Q over there, which you have and you know. You know, you can't BS a BSer. I've been known to sling it as good as anybody. You wanna know why the history or what it looks like? What pains me is the one, the lady that come up here and said, well, what's the beauty of Moreno Valley? What is the beauty is, is the natural beauty of the terrain of this area, one of the best in the Inland Empire. And we've succeeded in flushing it down the frickin' toilet. For 40 years, and good luck, Patty, trying to get this crew or anybody else to try to fix what's been going on. And you know it, you won't bring it out. You'll gaslight us all, just like you're doing tonight. You think this is serious? It's more serious than a frickin' heart attack. It goes on, it goes on here, it was going on down the county, as I pointed out. Just like them, have enough guts to come in and tell the truth instead of gaslighting us all.
The next speaker is Bob Palomares.
In council, I would like to, our first responders, thank them for all that they do every day. Just to follow up on what Roy was saying, you know, I'm back there sitting, I wasn't gonna speak, but James Lamore and Julie and all of these nonprofits, you know, they're getting bigger and they're doing more because there's more people they need. And I'm grateful that they're here. And I know, I think it was at the last council meeting, City Council was talking about $30,000 to help the people with the SNAP or, you know, just to get some groceries. And then I started to think of going way back to when the mayor was even, not even the mayor yet, he was just a councilman, but all of the shenanigans that he was involved in. And how much money he has cost this city from the debacle of the false appointment. You know, it just blows my mind that he stands there like, he's something that should be admired. But when you look at, and I've got a list of everything that he's been involved in, and now we come to $2 million? You know, what could we have done with those $2 million? That a young lady was asking about getting more police? We could've did something there. All these nonprofits, we could've helped them there. You know, when you think about $2 million of taxpayers' money that because he's irresponsible, like Roy said, you know, he's violating people's First Amendment rights and taking them, you know, dragging them through the dirt. And I went to the court hearings, all but one. And all the people that he had there testifying, testifying on his behalf all had a different story. And you know, I thought to myself, you know, why didn't he just quit and say, you know what, let's let it go? Because the city was paying to defend him. And now we come to this, the conclusion of this? If anything, you should've told him, you know what, you're on your own. This isn't something that the shit, the city should be involved in. You know, he attacks a family, drags them through, and you know, thumbs his nose at them. Well, here we are. So you know, I, I hope things get better for him. But he has a track record that you can't believe. You know, if you, unless you look at all that he's been involved in. You know, he's...
Mayor, that concludes all of public comments on tonight's non-agenda items.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you to all of our public speakers as well. Before we move into the joint consent calendars, I would like to say for the record that for the joint consent calendar, item 1.2, or I2, approval of the closed session minutes, I will be recusing myself at the recommendation and the legal advice of our city attorney, Steve Quintanilla, due to potential financial conflict of interest. And now, as we, we could please keep it down. Heard a couple times some folks speaking up, if we could just please be respectful. We'll go ahead and move into item I, joint consent calendars. Before I open the consent calendar for public comment, I ask my fellow council members if there are any items that they wish to remove from the consent calendar for separate action. Seeing none, we will go ahead and move into public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on the consent calendar?
We do, Mayor. The first three speakers are Louise Palomares, followed by Christopher Baca, followed by Roy Blacker.
Louise Palomares, community activist. I'm talking about the lawsuit that our mayor sued a, a couple here in the city. And it cost us, by the time it's all said and done, $2 million we're paying for his tobacco. Yes, it is. $2 million for your lies, your lies. And the city defended you. It cost them 30 something million, 30 something thousand to defend you in court. They should've never defended you. The, the judge could see through all your lies. They even could see through your lies, but you cried fall. So wow, here we are, $2 million later, we're paying this, this couple $2 million. I'd like you to know, they're paying a couple, the Thomases, $2 million cuz of this guy. And he wanted the city to keep on defending him because it's not over yet. $2 million, we could've did a lot of things with that Cabrera. You should resign, you have cost us a, oh yes, don't nod your head. I'm not lying, you know it's true. Oh, you're always the victim, oh, the poor victim, wow. You know, you trample over their First Amendment rights, left and right. They can't even go out anywhere because you'll cry fall. Oh, they're looking at me the wrong way, they're saying something to me. You're just a liar, fake phony and a fraud. My God, you have done so much damage to this city. How much more are you gonna cost us? The DA had to come and tell us when you put LaDonna on there. You brought up, violated the Brown Act. They came and told you, put, turn it around, do the right thing, or else, Cabrera. You cost us money then too. How much, let's add it up. Maybe I should ask for the records, the staff has them. They're there, I guess, you know, it's public information. And you act like, oh, you don't know any, get a job. Get a job. Instead of campaigning all around the city all the time for whatever your agenda is and harassing people, harassing a couple, a park, you know, a couple that lives here in the community. It's a darn shame. Yeah, it is a shame, nod your head. Am I lying? Tell me I'm lying, call me a liar. Yeah, you're, you're lying. $2 million. The judge cited, you know, what the Thomases, the city settled, you know, cuz they would've took it to court further, it cost the city $8 million. Even your pal right here, you know, he knows you're, what you're all about. You know, he's your lapdog, he's your, you know, sits on your lap, what do you want next, Cooper? Whatever you say, I'll vote that way. Yeah, really, really. Shame on you. And not only that, you're gonna keep on costing us, you're a liability to the city. I mean, I'm tired of paying taxes here and it goes to this. Lawsuits for Cabrera. Wow. So you won the case, right, Cabrera? And now you're gonna have to go fight him in federal court in another for the trampling of the First Amendment rights. Really, you won the case, right, Cabrera? You're a liar.
The next two speakers are Christopher Baca, followed by Roy Blacker.
Good evening again. Again, my comments are my own and don't reflect anybody else's views except myself. Regarding Ms. Palomares' comments on her non-agenda items, I concur on the first half as far as any of the consultant fees that the city is paying for, for issues that can be kept in-house as Councilwoman Baca Santa Cruz mentioned. What, what is the point of doing that if you could just do it yourselves? That's a total waste of money, so that is in regards to the operating budget. Not only is that the only issue, but it goes on and on and on and on regarding consultation, consultant fees that are astronomicals going into the millions of dollars for what? What is the purpose of having executives being paid half a million dollars, close to $300,000, a million dollars for what? Just to call consultations to do their work? Another issue Mr. Hague was talking about was General Plan Amendment. The, the Attorney General just said you did it wrong again. And you paid millions of dollars for a consultation, for what? So you can do it wrong again? And you're gonna pass it? And it's gonna go into lawsuits? What's the point of having these extravagant consultation fees and wasting the city's resources on this nonsense? It is amazing. It is absolutely amazing. I, I don't wanna nitpick the way Palomares does with each individuals, but please, you guys are barking up the wrong tree. You guys are not doing your jobs. You're sitting there rubber stamping nonsense. You should be ashamed of yourself, not Ms. Baca. She came out and said, you know, this should be in-house, and she's right. What is the point of having this? Ms. Shalinda, you're up for reelection, shame on you. Shame on you for rubber stamping everything that comes here. What's the point of having you? Just have the staff do whatever the heck they want. They're creating MOUs, they're spending outrageous amounts on consultations. What's the point of having them?
The final speaker is Roy Blacker.
First off, there's no problem with doing the box wraps on the murals except the procedure you use. You should teach them how to do business and how the real world works. Go out and say, okay, you got the utility box, you go out and get a sponsor to do that. Quit gaslighting and flushing our funds down the toilet for things we don't have to do. You know, once that money's gone, like the 250 grand you flushed down in a couple murals and $2,500 on a utility box? You know why we got the reputation we got? Look at every meeting for 40 years. You built it on a big, you built it on a foundation of quicksand and we're sinking fast. Just like item I2. How many cops would $2 million buy Mr. Ed? Five, six, seven? Even at the frickin' inflated rate we're paying for him now? You guys totally could've prevented this because yours truly sat right up here at this podium many times and told you put Baby Jesus and Dave under oath. If you'd have done that, $2 million probably, and I almost would say at 111% certainty, wouldn't have gone flushing down the toilet. You wanna talk about people don't have clothes or food, or we gotta give 30 grand? I want all four of you to turn to your right and left and look at front stage center. I'm asking the staff to point out exactly what's been going on. Your job over there to do that, and that's what we're paying you for, is you give these guys and us, the public, and tell us what's going on. You want this city to change? You want it to work for everybody? Then you better start getting your act together, every one of you. Cuz we're getting less, we're paying three times more for half the service all the way around. And it's gonna continue until we stop it. We elected you to stop it, we're paying you to stop it, and it ain't stopping. And you're seeing the frustration, not only from here, from sea to shining, shining sea. Please get your act together.
Mayor, that concludes all of public comments on tonight's agenda.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So we'll go ahead and bring it back to the deis. Now that public comment has concluded. And just a friendly reminder, we are still on consent calendar. And so, since no items were removed for separate action, I would like to just make, excuse me, a couple of quick comments on two. One is a group of items that we have on our consent calendar for public art. And I know we have several artists here in the public joining us this evening. And so, assuming this will get approved, just wanna formally congratulate all the artists and thank you guys for submitting your applications, for pursuing the funding. I've been, not at all of them, but many of those Art Commission meetings where I've had the chance to see your proposals. And in a couple of cases, some revisions that were made to some of the proposals. But just wanna formally congratulate the, I believe it's five of them that are on our consent calendar agenda. One is a utility box. One is a utility box wrap for Alexandra Garcia. Another one is for Andrew Lico. Another is for Brandon Karn. Another is for Octavio Orozco. And the fifth one is for Shane Mitchell. So just again, thank you guys. Thank you to our Parks Department for handling all of that. I know it's a lot of work, but little by little, you're seeing the growth of the arts movement, something that really only started a couple of years ago. And we're seeing more and more of it. And so very, very excited to see these projects come to fruition. And then lastly, just wanted to highlight another item on our consent calendar, which is item number I-13. It's a continuing application for grant funding from the California Department of Public Services. This is approximately $950,000 of funding that we're applying for once again to go toward childcare services here in the city of Moreno Valley. And so just want to thank again staff for staying on top of these things and making sure that we're bringing this funding to benefit our community. In this case, for helping folks access childcare in the city of Moreno Valley. And I'll look to my colleagues to see if there are any comments, any questions. I don't see any questions or comments. So at this time, we can go ahead and entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bernard?
And we need to get a motion and a second. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. I, I two, it's stated for the record already, my recusal on item I two.
That's correct. So we could do two motions.
Yeah, just looking at staff for clarification, or Mayor Pro temp, if you want to go ahead and speak, please.
I'll just, I'll move the item for consent and then one of you guys can have a second.
And can you clarify what the motion is?
Approve the consent calendar.
And just looking, since the question came up, am I allowed to vote on it or?
Yes, with the recusal being on record.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Thank you. So Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Mayor Pro temp, Baca Santa Cruz?
Yes.
And Mayor Cabrera?
Yes, again, with my recusal on item I two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move to item K as we don't have any public hearings on item J. We do have three items under K, general business. First one is K one, Office of the Mayor and City Council Sponsorship Program. And we'll start first with a staff report from our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. So good evening, Mayor and council and members of the public. Tonight, we're presenting an overview of the proposed city sponsorship program for fiscal year 2025, 2026. The mayor and Mayor Pro temp have proposed establishing an annual sponsorship budget of 60,000 to support community events and programs. This recommendation is now presented to the city council for consideration. For fiscal year 2025, 2026, all sponsored organizations will be required to provide an update to the city council on how awarded funds were used, ensuring transparency and accountability. Organizations may satisfy this requirement in one of two ways. And the first one would be an in-person presentation at a council meeting describing how funds were utilized and the reach of impact of the sponsorship. Or the second one would be a written update in the form of a letter outlining how funds were allocated and the outcomes achieved, which will be read into the public record at a city council meeting. If the organization or event is canceled, becomes unavailable, is unable to use a sponsorship as intended, or declines to provide a required report, staff will return the item to the city council for reallocation to, of these funds. This process ensures continued transparency in the administration of city sponsorships. So under or per policy 2.13, the city sponsorship, individuals or entities typically submit a sponsorship application to the city manager who may then forward the request to the city council. However, because the sponsorship program is already included in the fiscal year 2025, 2026, no applications will be required for this cycle. That concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We'll bring it back to the dais for any council questions of staff. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into public comment. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We do not, Mayor.
We'll go ahead and bring it back up to the dais for any council deliberation. Councilmember Delgado?
Yes, I just want to thank the local nonprofits that assist us in helping our community. When we first started talking about them, when I was Mayor Pro temp, two years ago, two or three years ago, we went through a vigorous process in which we selected these folks and they're still with us. And I've been to all three. I've been to the food giveaway at the mall. I've been to Julie Pedroza's Building Up Lives Foundation office. And then I've been to James Armour's, Armour's Day of Giving event. And they're all doing great work. Like one of the speakers said, they are doing very, very good work. And obviously, there's a, there's a whole list of one-time sponsorships and organization sponsorships, but I like to highlight the three that are actually boots to the ground, helping the folks in the city of Moreno Valley. So publicly thanking you guys.
And if I could piggyback on that as well, you know, over the past few years, we've made many changes to some of our programs and the way that we approach helping, especially in this case, community-based organizations and nonprofit organizations in our city. And I'll go all, all the way back to when my predecessor was in this seat and I was a council member, when we established the Moreno Valley Community Foundation, like officially, we launched that, grew it into something big, started to, you know, ensure that funding was flowing into that community foundation with the ultimate goal of making sure that funding goes back into the community, right? It was because we saw all of the work that our nonprofits are doing, right? That Councilmember Delgado just listed, right? Power Speaks Louder, Building Up Lives and compassionate, hole in the wall, et cetera, et cetera. There's so many nonprofits that for so long were maybe getting a little bit of assistance from the city or indirect assistance, but as long as I was on the council, I had never seen direct financial assistance to, you know, really infuse into our local nonprofits. And so I'm just so glad to see that we've come a really long way from establishing this sponsorship list, which is kind of some smaller dollar sponsorships to now having other programs, like the pilot program for homelessness and the, the project pantry funding that the council approved just a month ago. And so I, I'm so glad to see the growth because the demand is certainly there and I hope that we don't stop here, that we continue to grow this ecosystem that has been bearing fruit for many years and that we continue to support the organizations that are boots on the ground, helping to feed and clothe and house those that need it the most. And so just want to thank my colleagues. Thank you, Mayor Pro temp, for figuring this list out. You know, this is something that MPT and the mayor do together before we bring it to the full council. So I want to thank Mayor Pro temp and thank my colleagues for, for all of their work on this initiative. And are there any further comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, we can go ahead and entertain a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendations.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bernard? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Mayor Pro temp, Baca Santa Cruz?
Yes.
And Mayor Cabrera?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes with five yeses. Congratulations to all of the awardees. And that brings us to item K two, which is background information regarding the proposed ban of the sale and distribution of kratom. I'm getting a yes, not over here. And we'll turn it over to our city manager for a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro temp, council members. At the last meeting, November 4th, council approved a motion to agendize this particular item to discuss the proposed ban of the sale and distribution of kratom and use what the Riverside County Board of Supervisors recently approved. So in the development of the staff report, there is background information for you to be able to deliberate and make an informed decision along with the attachment of the staff report and the actual ordinance from Riverside County Board of Supervisors. But in general, kratom is a bio, is a botanical product native to Southeast Asia and has been used traditionally for its stimulant and pain relieving properties. Its two primary ingredients bind to the same opioid receptors in the brain as morphine and heroin. While low doses may act as a mild stimulant, high doses can cause sedation, dependence, and opiate-like withdrawal symptoms. In recent years, as developers, growers have been able to pool or extract highly concentrated and then the synthetic development of kratom products have proliferated the U.S. These are commonly sold in smoke shops, convenience stores such as 7-Eleven and so forth, that the U.S. Food and Drug has actually looked and warned that these products may cause medical issues. And the Drug Enforcement Agency has actually listed this particular drug, kratom and the seven dash OH as drugs and chemicals of concern. In fact, the Assembly Bill 1,088 was passed by the Assembly at the state level, but unfortunately because this has to do with health, it has to go to the Senate Health Committee in 2026 for consideration to potentially create statewide standards. But until that occurs, several California cities, Huopan Valley, Newport Beach, Oceanside, San Diego, Solano Beach, Orange County, and now Riverside County have taken action to ban this particular product until the Assembly Bill and the Senate Health Committee can really consider this in 2026 for actually regulation of statewide standards. With that, all of the details within the staff report and the attachments are, have been attached and are available for the official record. And I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, for the staff report. We'll bring it back to the dais for any council questions of staff.
I have one question, Brian. Is this, so basically what you're saying about AB 1088, this could be a statewide ban or a statewide regulated, I wouldn't say drug, but substance that are, that these things are being sold in 7-Eleven liquor stores all across the state of California. So this, what we're doing here in Riverside County and possibly if this passes tonight, the city of Moreno Valley could be just temporary and then it'll be kind of a, an assembly bill adopted into law when they get back from, or when it gets through the process up in Sacramento.
Yes, as a short answer. The Senate Health Committee will consider the Assembly Bill, which was restricting sales to individuals 21 years and older, child-resistant packaging requirements, prohibition of marketing appealing to children, potency cap consistent with the concentration found in the actual drug itself or kratom leaves. The actual ordinance that Riverside County has approved prohibits the sale and distribution and possession of kratom and seven dash OH products exceeding a certain percentage, which is 2%. Prohibits the sale of kratom and seven OH products to persons under 21 of age. Bans packaging and marketing that is attractive to children, including candy style or carton labeling. Prohibits the sale of products containing synthetic and semi-synthetic kratom, meaning that really it goes back just to the natural leaves themselves. Requires age verification at point of sale. So what it is, in essence, doing is it's trying to replicate what the Assembly Bill shows that the Assembly approved in a, I believe it was a 76 to zero vote. But definitely depending on deliberations, it could be a temporary until the state creates statewide standards and then that temporary ordinance then is rescinded.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll bring it back up to the dais for any comments or a motion in a second.
I, I just have one comment and the reason I brought, just to let you know, the reason I brought this forward is I heard about this substance being sold in, in our stores and I did a little bit of research and found out that Riverside County just did their, they voted on it and it passed to restrict and ban some of the, the stuff that you outlined, Brian. And I was shocked actually that, that these folks, these distributors and manufacturers of this stuff has gotten away with it this long. I would not want my granddaughter to be able to go purchase some of this, even this, the the lowest level, under 2% kratom, especially the seven O. These kids are getting addicted to it and they're fighting over it and then they're stealing it. And it's, and it's, I, I did a lot of research on it, talked to a couple county supervisors and they thought the same thing. It's like, what are we doing here? So I hope this passes in the city of Moreno Valley because it's, I, I get that we have free enterprise and you can manufacture and sell stuff, but we have to step up and protect the kids from buying this stuff and just willy-nilly like a, they're going to get a Coke and a, a thing of kratom. So thank you.
Thank you, council member. And then as you were speaking, I thought of something else, at least between now and the time, if and when the state legislature and the governor signs a piece of legislation into law, we'll see what the details of that are and how that affects us. But the enforcement part of this, maybe, you don't need to go into it into too much detail, but I'm just, you know, wondering what it's going to look like, assuming this gets approved, it looks like it will, what the city's plan is to inform the businesses that are selling this substance currently to ensure that they're in compliance and that, you know, you know, if, if necessary, we're enforcing the law and issuing citations or whatever that is.
To speak freely, as that might be several steps from now because this was background information and hopefully, depending on what you deliberate, you will most likely give a motion for us to bring an ordinance back, which would have to go for a first reading, second reading. But, you know, a lot of times we, we do partner with our regional partners and if somebody has recently adopted something very similar to what we've adopted, we will basically partner with them in the messaging. They had established penalties for violations, including misdemeanor prosecution, fines up to $1,000 and potential business license revocation. And so if deliberation and ultimately approval of an ordinance, we would be communicating that through our business license division to all of our businesses that sell this particular product. And we would have to go through an educational period and then once that educational period is reached, then we'd have to start enforcement.
Thank you. And if there's no further comment or deliberation from the dais, we can entertain a motion and a second.
I'll motion to approve staff's recommendation of directing them to bring back a resolution. That's right, an ordinance.
Yeah, so right now, the recommendation on, on the staff report is review background information for proposed ban and provide any necessary direction. So that if it is council's wish, it would be an ordinance banning kratom very similar in design to Riverside County's ordinance.
That's my recommendation. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Mayor Protam, Baca Santa Cruz?
Yes.
And Mayor Cabrera?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes with five yeses. And our third item under K is a report of November fourth, 2025, emergency item related to food resources, and we'll turn it back over to City Manager Mohan for a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam, councilmembers. In essence, the update in the report became fairly simple when most of the nonprofits that are part of our partnership provided the update themselves earlier tonight. Just to go over a few things, so at the last meeting, council did approve thirty thousand to be distributed to Feeding America and our other pantry groups. So on November twelfth, Salvation Army had a particular event, and they provided critical perishable staples such as milk, eggs, cheese, and some meats in addition to the dry and canned goods typically provided in their food boxes to over a hundred and fifty families. So the dry food, dry canned and goods and foods that they typically provide is about fifty dollars a box. What we were able to do in providing five thousand dollars gave them an additional thirty-three dollars that gave the ability to have milk, eggs, cheese, and some meats. So it gave those families, you know, a much better variety of the food that they would typically get. Feeding America on November thirteenth held a food distribution event at the CRC in which they served over four hundred and fifty boxes to families in need. November thirteenth, as Bee Hunter from Power Speaks Louder mentioned, she had an additional hundred and sixty families that went through and were served through the donation of five thousand dollars. Again, that reached hundred and sixty families and was able to assist in the Project Pantry. November sixteenth, due to the rain, Inland Compassion and Building Up Lives Foundation did partner, and as Mr. Armore had mentioned, that they provided fifty families with a hundred dollar gift cards with the five thousand that were provided. And not only that, they went through and did an income level of each of the recipients, and so they verified that they were SNAP eligible and SNAP recipients as well. So just keep in mind that SNAP benefits calculated using the USDA's TFP, which is the Thrifty Food Plan, typically for a family of four costs on average about two hundred and thirty dollars. And so in partnering with our nonprofits and our community-based organizations, we were able to take their typical boxes of fifty dollars and get them up to eighty, eighty-eight, ninety dollars. And so we were able to give a closer staple of a box of food to what the SNAP average is. Upcoming holiday drive events that are coming up and some other events that the nonprofits or the community-based organizations are doing in the next few days are updated on our website. It's called movail.gov/pantry. But the Feeding America and Salvation Army have agreed to host an additional one-time distribution event. And so we're currently working on the details of that and will be forthcoming with that marketing. But it will be held Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, from eleven to one, somewhere on our City Hall campus. And what they're hoping to do is provide approximately a hundred and fifty families with the holiday staples to ensure that they have turkey, ham, and all the fixings as well. With that, that completes my update of the initial thirty thousand dollars that was approved and authorized and available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. We will go ahead and bring it back to the dais for any council questions of staff. Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We do, Mayor. The first speaker is Julie Pedrosa.
Good day, good day. I think that was awesome, you guys, to put that into the community. They needed it. So for us, Building Up Lives, we're not granted that funding just to let people know. People got a little mad at that. The truth of the fact is, the city called us, I didn't answer the phone. We had two thousand phone calls last week for food. We typically get about five hundred. This is, this is just one of our phone lines. We have three. So on our food bank phone line, we usually get about five hundred, and it jumped to two thousand. So we were, we were busy. I wanted to share a couple things. So we have what we called the pilot program inside of Our Place Restaurant. It is a booth inside of a restaurant that's open from eight to two. It's at two three nine three five Sunny Me Boulevard. He's been in this city like twenty-five, thirty years. And you can walk in there Monday through Saturday and get non-perishables and some refrigerated stuff, but you have to ask the server. And so you're able to get one bag of free emergency food. Anybody can. Just walk in there and sign your name and how many people in your family, because we're still trying to keep track as well. That goes typically, when we first started, three to five people, then it jumped to ten, seven to ten. We are doing thirty per day. So it's like forty-hour work, just keeping food on that table. That's one thing. We feed groceries on Sundays. We typically feed, thank you to Marina Valley Sprouts, by the way, for that. We typically feed anywhere between a hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty. And we typically have about a thousand, give or take a thousand fifteen hundred of pounds of food. So I'd like to see that some of the nonprofits to track how much food, like in pounds, that they're, if they're rescuing the food, number one. And I'd like to see, too, how much of it went to food, how much went to admin. I'd like to see that. I'd like to see zip codes, because I do know we got nine two five five three down, but we just have our Paris store in nine two five five one, lots of apartments and mobile homes. And I'd like to see that area of town to get resources, too, because they get forgotten. East, Edmont has Joseph Project, great, and they service that area, but we really don't have too many places out there except Amani Church, and they do it every other. So other thing, too, checking for your EBT card is not the goodest thing, you guys. You gotta check that that's not an old EBT card from ten years ago. Check utility bill and check their driver's license. You need to vet them because they have, many people have said, I got eight turkeys from all the nonprofits in my fridge. What are you gonna do with eight turkeys? Really? I don't care if you got twelve people in your family. What are you gonna do with eight turkeys? It's not right. So there needs to be a level. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes all of public comments on this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to Julianne. Thank you for your public comments. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the dais for council deliberation, any comments, and then on this one, I don't think we need to take any action. It's simply a receive and file item. Any comments from my colleagues, Councilmember Delgado?
Yeah, I just want to publicly thank, Brian, the City Manager. I think you brought this as an emergency, your team brought this as an emergency item last meeting. You guys worked hard to get it done, and that is the fruits of your labor. So I just want to publicly thank you guys, the E-Team, for recognizing something that needed to be done in our city, coming up with the funds and making it happen. So thank you guys very much. And thank you for nonprofits, like we said before, for joining in and answering the call. I know that somehow, some way, they finally got ahold of you, so thank you, guys.
Yeah, enticement to that. You know, thank you to our staff for making that happen, and then to all of our nonprofits for mobilizing quickly in a very short timeframe to ensure that this assistance is going out. And as some or most of us have probably seen by now, the shutdown technically has come to an end, the longest shutdown in U.S. history for the federal government. And so, you know, hopefully, we don't find ourselves in a situation like this again, God forbid. And so just very proud of what we were able to do and mobilize quickly. Seeing no further comments, again, this is a receive and file item. There is no vote necessary. So we'll go ahead and move to our next item, which is L, the Regional Commission Committee Board Reports. We do have several this evening, and we'll first go to District Two, Councilmember Delgado, with an update for the March JPA.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'm providing an update from the March Joint Powers Commission Special Meeting that was held on November twelfth, and the commission discussed branding for the March Inland Port Airport Authority, or MIPA, and March JPA staff will bring back branding materials for the commission to consider at a future meeting. So we did a round, a tabletop exercise that kind of threw out ideas, and the consultant's gonna take those ideas back, put it all packaged together, and then bring it to us for consideration for approval. So that concludes my update on the March Joint Powers Commission meeting that was held on November twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have two reports that I'll be providing this evening. The first one is for RCTC. This is an update for the meeting held on November twelfth. Chris Gray of Western Riverside Council of Governments, also known as WRCOG, presented the results of a comprehensive study regarding travel, commuting, and jobs in Riverside County. One of the things he went over was the migration or the movement of inland empire residents, specifically Riverside County residents, and where folks are going to. Like what regions, what counties are they going to? For example, when folks are commuting to work in the mornings, what other counties are they going to? It's always good to look at data. And then a question was asked about more micro data when it comes to city to city, because they showed big picture county to county, and they said that our staff should have that information. And so, you know, if anybody's curious or interested in seeing the movement of people, it's not always what we might believe it is. When you look at the data and the numbers, it paints a different picture, and this, this report certainly did. The commission awarded an agreement to ICF Recourses LLC for Next Generation Motorist Assistance Program Study Services in an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars. The next meeting is scheduled for December tenth, and that concludes my update for RCTC. And then my second and last update is for the Southern California Association of Governments Meeting held November sixth in Los Angeles. The council received the proposed 2026 schedule of regular meetings. Additionally, the council received the following reports as receive and file. California State Transportation Agency, CALSTA, Transit Transformation Task Force. The final meeting of the task force was held on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The final report examined recent transit trends and challenges across California, including persistent ridership declines, funding shortfalls, and fragmented service delivery. It identified critical barriers to access and reliability, factors that must be addressed to restore and grow transit usage. REEP two-point-oh program update. The report summarized the program status and path forward to ensure that SCAG successfully deploys resources across the region in line with the goals and objectives of the REEP two-point-oh program. Legislative update. End of session Sacramento Legislative Update, the twenty-twenty-five demographic workshop recap, and the federal appropriations update. HCD Review of Housing Element Update. In October twenty-twenty-five, SCAG was notified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development that they intend to begin contacting individual jurisdictions within the SCAG region regarding high priority non rezoning programs identified in their housing elements that have not yet been completed. Jurisdictions are therefore encouraged to prioritize progress on these programs. And lastly, we received a update in person by Secretary of Transportation, Omid Shakhin. He came down to L.A. to present, and one of the questions that came up from the regional council, actually a member from out here in the desert area, was regarding the high-speed rail and what the status is of that. And to many is, I think, pleasant surprise, the secretary was very candid and honest about the delays in completion of that project, the, you know, going over budget and not being able to meet certain deadlines. He was very candid about that, which, you know, I have a lot of respect for. And, and he gave specifics about, you know, new estimates or updates. And so basically, he said, you know, we're about sixty percent complete in a certain aspect of the project, and at this point, we're so far in to this project that it doesn't make sense to stop. It, we have to complete it. We have to continue until it's done and we get that project finished. And he said, by his team's best estimates, the completion of the high-speed rail would be somewhere around twenty thirty-four, twenty thirty-five, and that's with today's data and today's estimates. And so that will conclude my report for the last SCAG meeting. The next one is February fifth, twenty twenty-six. Next up, we'll go to Councilmember Bernard for RTA.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'm providing updates from the Riverside Transit Agency Board Administration and Operations Committee Meeting held on November fifth. The committee authorized staff to award an agreement to Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company to provide bus tire leasing services for a total project amount of three-point-seven million dollars. The committee adopted the Ridership Code of Conduct to be effective November twentieth of twenty twenty-five. The next meeting is scheduled for December tenth. That concludes my report on the last RTA Board Administration and Operations Committee Meeting.
Thank you. And the last one is for Mayor Protam from WRCOG.
Thank you. At the November third, twenty twenty-five, Western Riverside Council of Governments Executive Committee Meeting, reports for fiscal department activities, committees, agency activities, and various external committees were received and filed. Additionally, the executive committee discussed the following key items. First Amendment to the Agreement for Services for Public Health Institute to support the Iren Energy Fellowship Program for Service Year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. This year marks the third program service year for the Iren Energy Fellowship. The goal of the program is to recruit local talent from local universities and community colleges and place the fellows directly at a public sector agency to work on the agency's essential energy initiatives. During the first year, eleven fellows were placed, followed by thirteen in the second year. The third cohort started in October twenty twenty-five, and twenty-four fellows were placed at our local public sector agencies. Another eleven fellows will start an eight-month fellowship in January twenty twenty-six. These fellows work full-time, forty hours a week, for eleven-month or eight-month terms. They get paid, receive benefits, and have professional development opportunities. This fellowship is more akin to an entry-level opportunity and the first step in many of these individuals' careers. The next meeting for WRCOG will be held December first at two P.M. at the County of Riverside Administrative Center on Lemon Street. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Employee Association Reports. We do not have one this evening, which brings us to the famous City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam, councilmembers. Just want to wish everybody happy holidays and for Thanksgiving, and remind everyone that the City Hall will be closed next week, November twenty-seventh and November twenty-eighth. And we have a very large event that occurs almost all day here at City Hall on December sixth, that Saturday. We have snow day from ten to five. That will be at the amphitheater. The city will be bringing in snow for the kids. And then at five forty-five, we'll be holding the holiday tree lighting here at City Hall. With that, that completes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. That brings us to closing comments from the council, and we'll go to District Four, Councilmember Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone since we will not be here next week. Also, when our city says that the fun run was gonna happen, rain or shine, they truly meant it. Shout out to Jeremy's team for being out there and, and, and working through that. We started the race about fifteen minutes early because they had gotten notice that the, the sky was gonna open up and pour at ten A.M. And what do you know, at ten A.M., the sky opened up and poured. But for all the children that came out, they were extremely excited, because they, the only time you get to play in the puddles, and your parents can't get mad, because there are puddles all around us. So shout out to Jeremy and his team for being able to do that, and it was still well attended, even though it rained. I really feel like people really just wanted to run and walk in the rain. I saw mothers out there pushing strollers. I'm pretty sure I saw at least a child that could not have been older than two or three months. So folks were pretty dedicated, along with city staff that participated or put on the event. I think December second is the last day to adopt- That participated or put on the event. Um I think December second is the last day to adopt a senior, correct, Jeremy? Yes, December second. So the city is still looking, if anyone wants to adopt a senior, um the city is still looking to adopt a senior. I myself adopted about fifty of them. So um and like I always say, seniors are always um some of the forgotten. We always do a lot of stuff for children, but please don't forget our seniors who make all of this possible. Um I would also like to thank the federal government uh for figuring it out and ending the shutdown. Forty-two days, I believe, the shutdown went and I just actually um received notice from one of our former staffers who now works in DC. Who was like, hey, I finally got paid the last few days. So um shout out to you, Yvette, who I know is listening to this as ASMR to go to sleep. I miss you. Um but I I do wanna close. And and this is probably not typical because most people are like, she's gonna keep her foot on their neck. No, I'm gonna let y'all have a reprieve. Um for for the holidays because I I want to uh keep it, keep it jolly and keep it nice. But I do wanna. Um at least close my closing comments in recognition of someone that passed away on October eighth. So for those of you that don't know, my job outside of this is I am the Executive Director of the Labor and Community Center at UC Riverside. And I was brought in and mentored by Mr. Kent Wong. Kent Wong is a was a labor. Um attorney, was a labor educator, and started the first labor center at UCLA. And Kent Wong, along with UC Merced and UC Berkeley, went along with um Senator Elena Doraso. Went and advocated for labor centers to be at all of the UCs. And so um Kent passed away on October eighth at the age of sixty-nine. And Kent was extremely important to the labor movement. When I tell you that Kent, didn't matter the time nor the hour nor the place, Kent would show up and he would have conversations and. He was at the forefront of a lot of the battles that you see today that are happening around the college campuses um for the Opportunity for All. Um campaign, that was a lot of Kent's doing in the background and making sure that all, um regardless of status. Um get the same rights and benefits at UC, that they're able to be hired, that they're able to get jobs, that they're able to use these degrees that they get. And although that campaign is still ongoing because our legislature is still kind of a little shaky about it. I have faith that one day we'll be able to see that come through. And Kent has marched and walked with the best of them at the forefront of it. Um and so I I want to close my comments in honor of of a giant of a man. That anybody who really truly believed in in working people in the working class. Would have known that no matter the time nor the hour, Kent would have picked up the phone and come to the forefront of you, especially someone as being my mentor. Um so I am closing my closing comments in honor of Kent Wong, um who passed away unexpectedly on October eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, District Three, Councilmember Gonzalez.
I I just, I have a few uh comments here. One, uh first off, the Color Fun Run, my first one, it was uh. It was an experience for sure, you know, seeing all the all the faces of the children, the parents. And everyone that was at the different stations that uh showered me with color. And got in and especially when it, because it was pouring um and and got in my eyes and my glasses, so it was. Every time I had a, I kinda had to stop and, you know, wipe my face with wipeies and stuff, but it was, I really enjoyed it. I really enjoyed uh the the run and and. You know, uh talking to staff and and Brian and everyone that was there, Jeremy, Sean, I saw Sean and 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 others, so. And and Eddie, of course. Uh so it was, it was an experience and um I wanna do it again. Hopefully next time it's not in the in the rain, but if it is, it's it's fine. So and the council members that were there as well. Um Thanksgiving, right, it's just around the corner. It's it's a beautiful time to spend with with family, friends. And um you know, just just thank God for all the blessings we have, all the all the all the opportunities we have in in. In California and in this great country of ours of of the US, so. And also don't do not, you know, forget the ones that don't have the the things that we have. Um and again, spend time with family and friends. And the third thing, uh last, again, thanking staff for always being responsive to to the residents. And also to addressing the happenings of District Three. I wanna again, thank you for doing that. And always being there and responsive. So with that, I will end my comments.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to District Two, Councilmember Delgado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I too would like to uh wish you a happy Thanksgiving. Piggybacking on, I don't even know if that's a term, piggybacking, is on a term, yep, or uh about the senior center. Um I was, I went to the meeting yesterday and um.
Did you say the words?
Your senior mom?
Yes. Yes. So I do qualify to be on the Senior Citizens Commission, but uh went and they they were super excited. And I tell you, that commission is awesome and they're super excited about how many folks they were able to feed during the shutdown. Um they had. Uh like uh someone said that they had a a typical day of feeding here is about three hundred two, two eighty to three hundred. They had four hundred fifty. And Feeding America brought extra because they knew that people were gonna be uh in need and it was amazing. So. Um I wanna thank them for that, the seniors uh get involved. Um they are in need as well. In so much so that they come from all over uh our region to go to our senior center for lunch. Um I heard that they, there's folks that uh signed in from Beaumont, from Marietta, Menifee, um Banning. All just to come out and and uh socialize and uh eat a good meal. So I thought that was really cool. And I'm gonna switch gears just a little bit as far as uh we always talk about what we've done the last couple of weeks, right? We fun run, we go to ribbon cuttings and. Um events, but some of the stuff that we do behind the scenes that a lot of you guys just don't know unless you're the person calling us. Uh we had a resident paint his curb in front of his house because he didn't want any, paint it red, because he didn't want anybody parking in front of his house. Well. That was a no-no. So my point to that is, uh I I I get calls like that. We fix it. Today, we got an email saying it's fixed. It's no longer red. Um and you know, told the resident, yeah, not do that. So um some of the stuff we do. Uh we also, myself and MPT collaborated and worked with the seniors at one of the senior mobile home parks. Uh to resolve an issue and hopefully it's gonna be resolved very soon. Um working with uh. Councilmember Gonzalez regarding a bunch of shopping carts in a hiking area in one of our. Mountainous areas. Um and then working with the mayor this weekend, we're gonna attend a um a neighborhood. It's kinda like a neighborhood watch meeting, but it's more of a neighborhood uh getting together and talk about issues. Uh they invited the mayor, myself, uh SO. To come and kinda see what's going on, state of the city in their neighborhood. Um maybe bounce some some ideas off of us and and we hear their their issues as well. So some of the stuff that we do, you guys. Um we just, and that's our jobs, a hundred percent. I know I can hear someone saying that we're at your job, a hundred percent, but the stuff, the stuff that you see us do. Are ribbon cuttings and fun runs and um you know, Christmas tree lightings and on the bigger stuff, but there's a lot of stuff that we do. Um that we actually enjoy. I I actually enjoy resolving an issue for um a a resident calling in and saying that, hey. We we have this issue going on. Um another one was um. Right now, we're helping with the he- the help of the city, uh helping a a member of the northeast end uh with a drainage issue that when it rains and it pours. It floods out his front yard, so we're sending some folks over there with, you know, some engineers, how could we fix this? So. Um cool stuff like that that we do for our residents on a on a weekly basis, all of us. Um that we kinda just do because that's our, that's our jobs. And I just wanted to highlight some of that stuff because I think it's important to see us. In a in a different light than just going out there taking pictures and cutting ribbon ribbon cuttings and uh stuff like that. So um Thanksgiving. Um yes, it is a time for family. I remember my mother-in-law was at our house and she was, she was not doing very well. She ended up passing probably. Um a couple of months after Thanksgiving, but she said, she told me one thing. She said, our house, this house that we were in is gonna be full of kids one day. This is before. Any of our kids' generation had kids. Now, we have five. Under the age of five in that house. And I'm looking at this Thanksgiving, this is gonna be a little different, Grandma, because we're gonna have a a lot of little ones running around like you said we were gonna have. And I I mean, I I listened to her. Uh she had dementia, so I had to filter that stuff, but she was right. And we have a lot of littles uh running around this Thanksgiving, so. I'm thankful for that. And I think everybody has a story, right? Everybody has a story and I think everybody has something like that to be thankful for this Thanksgiving, so. But I'm thankful for uh my peers, I'm thankful for all you guys and um please be kind, especially this time of year. Uh help someone out in need if they need help. So that's it. Look at that, one second.
Thank you. Next up, Mayor Protem, Baca Santa Cruz.
Hey, right on the dot. Thank you. Good evening. Um couple of my updates. Events that I went to this past, um since the last meeting. Um I attended the Turning Red Tape into Red Carpet where the city was nominated for. Six of the seven categories. Marvelous um to be out there and be recognized for projects like um the best. Art initiative for our mobile murals, the best collab between the chamber and the city for our apprenticeship hub. And others that you can look up. I won't go through each one of those, but it was nice to be recognized among other cities in the inland empire. Um I also attended the Environmental Historical Preservation Commission, which is held the second Mondays at six PM. They're looking and bringing in guest speakers. So if you're interested in learning about the environment or history, um you should keep an eye out for their agendas. Starting in January, they'll have a speaker series. I think it's gonna be every other month. So um very, uh I invite you all to come out and hear. Some of Marina Valley's history. Um also attended the Veterans Day Event on Tuesday. Beautiful event um with our guests, our um. Speaker, Congressman Tecano. Um it was nice to hear about the history of Veterans Day and to celebrate all the veterans, especially being here. In our uh military city. I also attended, I didn't run the fun run. Even though there might be some pictures of me running, it was just a short distance. It was pouring down rain. And I asked that morning, are we still doing it? And I was told, yeah, they said rain or shine, but I didn't know you meant like a blizzard. But um you know, it wasn't freezing cold. It it was very wet, but it wasn't freezing cold. So um not sure if it was. Easier to do than last year when it was beaming down sun. Um trade-off, but it was, it was great to be out there with community. Um the cheerleaders out there, uh people come dressed in their costumes, um groups of people who have obviously got together a group to run together. Uh people from out of town, young, uh you know, on scooters or little tiny bikes, animals, people brought their dogs. So it was nice to be in community. Um just like the trunk or treat, they were here to have a good time. And they didn't let the weather bother them. So it was nice to be out there. It's um our third time. And um. Finally, I just wanna say happy Thanksgiving. If you're able to share with your neighbors, your um. Or those out in the community, find a nonprofit that you might wanna spend some time right now is, there's a lot of need out there. So if you're in a position to give. I implore you to do, take that opportunity now. So with that, happy Thanksgiving and we'll see you next month.
Thank you to all of my colleagues and a few closing comments here. Uh also, Veterans Day Ceremony was was beautiful. And um well-attended. Uh it might have been one of the best attended that we've had uh to date. Um so thank you to staff for for coordinating eh coordinating all of that and the media team especially. Um you guys are always behind the scenes, but. Uh thank you for for all of the events that you uh make sure are very successful and logistically coordinated. Also, um just again to reiterate, Project Pantry, uh something that the council approved at the last council meeting and our city manager and our staff have been. Implementing, executing, as you heard, various updates. So please, uh if you want more information on our food assistance programs and the work that we are doing. Uh please visit mobile.org slash pantry and you can find all of this information from uh upcoming events to hours of operation. Contact information, et cetera. Uh you have it all there at mobile.org slash pantry. Also wanna thank the Riverside Latino Network for the invitation to be a speaker at their sixth annual. Uh Young Latinos Conference at UC Riverside. Uh my alma mater, there were approximately two hundred young students there. From all across the inland empire. Um all of them were high schoolers and it was just really nice to see a room full, on a rainy day. A room full of uh two hundred young folks from across the IE uh to, you know, just really network, to learn. I was really impressed. Um when I arrived, they were asking them, you know, what it, what is the most impactful thing that you've learned today? What what has impacted you the greatest and you're taking away from this conference? And one of them started talking about leveraging debt and all this. And I'm, they're, these are fifteen, sixteen-year-old students, so that, very, very impressive that they're learning that really important information at such a young age. That's gonna set them up for success far into the future. So thank you to the Riverside Latino Network. Also had the opportunity to attend the Sixth Annual Friendship Dinner with the Muslim Family Foundation and. Doctor Ali Al-Sadoun at the Senior Center just this past Saturday. Uh one of the main services that they provide. Uh which is actually timely uh because of Movember. Um the Muslim Family Foundation and Doctor Ali really focus on providing mental health services. To the community. Um and one of the things they talked about was men and making sure that men have safe spaces to. Openly be able to talk about things, uh cause oftentimes I think we tend to just, you know, the stereotypes, right? There's maybe a little bit or a lot of truth in all these cliches and stereotypes, but one of those stereotypes for men um is that we just kind of. Suck it up and just deal with it and, you know, move forward, but it's important to be able to, you know, talk about these things. Uh candidly, uh because especially with our younger folks, uh all of us too, you know, adults and our seniors, but. Especially our younger folks are getting hit left and right by so many things of this world that are affecting their mental health. And so just wanna give a shout out to the Muslim Family Foundation. Also, a shout out again to the Ill and Compassion and Building Up Lives Foundation, James R. Moore and Julianne Stewart and your teams. Um for that event this weekend. Thank you for letting my son and I spend some time there and volunteer with you. It was nice to see Seth Cox and. Uh other familiar faces there as well. Um and and so thank you. Thank you for what you all continue to do. And wanted to mention that next Monday, November twenty-fourth at three PM. Uh Laura Vasquez at her office located at two four zero two one Alessandro Boulevard is doing a Thanksgiving pie giveaway. Uh while supplies last, uh we are, I think, at about two hundred pies right now. Don't quote me on that, please. Uh make sure to text nine five one five nine two two five five five. Text pie. To nine five one five nine two two five 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 for more information and to ensure that um. You have everything you need if you'd like to come out. Again, that's next Monday, November twenty-fourth at three PM, a pie giveaway. At two four zero two one Alessandro Boulevard. I hope to see you there. And with that. I'll close by saying also a happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Uh the holidays are upon us. We are in the full swing of the holiday season. The weather is um finally here, you know, the colder weather, the rain. Um I I heard there's some snow already in some of these mountains, so. Um you know, it's it's nice. It's a very nice time of the year and a a perfect opportunity to spend time with family. Just kind of calm down, breathe a little bit and savor those memories and savor the food as well. So with that, everybody have a good night, happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you at the next one. Oh, you're right, you're right. Thank you. Looking to my colleagues to see if there are any future agenda item requests. No? Okay, perfect. So now, we will officially adjourn our meeting at seven fifty-seven PM. Thank you.